Citizens of Alpine, to the Alpine City Planning Commission today, September sixteenth, here at City Hall. Okay, we will do a quick roll call, and then we will have a prayer. Let's see.
I did.
Okay. Michelle?
No, you're...
You need to remember, right?
Michelle, you're doing it right. Will you give us an opening prayer? Okay, so let's do a quick roll call, and we'll have a prayer by, given by Troy Slade, and then Michelle will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, here, for Planning Commission, Planning Commission members, we have Troy Slade, Michelle Shermer, John McKay, myself, Jeff Davis, and Seuss Whittenburg, and from the city, we have Ryan Robinson and Jason Judd, and also here, Marla Fox, on the recording and taking the minutes. Let's start with a prayer by Troy, and then the prayer by Michelle.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are thankful that we are able to meet in this free country, in this beautiful city, and we're thankful for the freedoms that we have and for all the blessings which we have, heavenly Father. We pray at this time, as we review the things on our agenda tonight, that we can be guided and directed by Thee to consider all the different possibilities and make the best decisions. And we ask Thee for these blessings and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Troy. Everybody rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I wanted to do this last time, but totally spaced it. So I am going to share something here. Oh, I guess, I guess what I was going to share is now part of the, part of the meeting minute, so I don't have to look it up on my phone. So I will just share that my great-great-great-grandfather, William Wadsworth, was the, was the man that brought the five other families to Alpine in eighteen fifty. Okay? And so for those of you that don't know, during Alpine Days, I lead a group of people on a hike every year and talk about the history of Alpine, and I talk a little bit about our water, because that's what I do for a living. But I'm fascinated by the history. And this year, when I was preparing for our hike, I was reading about the very first Planning Commission. Okay? And it coincides with a lot of things, because in the nineteen fifties, there was a lot of issues here, because for the first time in a long time, this, the town started to grow, okay, and was facing a lot of challenges. And so the city council said, we're going to form a planning and zoning commission, okay? So this is taken out of the history of Alpine, and I'll just read it. That during February and March of nineteen fifty-six, the city council appointed a planning commission. Dell Burgess was the chairman, with Stanley Gilekka, Robert Patterson, Dan Clark, and Robert Hall as the members. They were to map out the city, and plan for future streets and roadways, and draw up subdivision rules and regulations, and determine zoning ordinances to keep the city in an orderly growth pattern. A year later, in March fourth nineteen fifty-seven, Dan Clark met with the city council and presented a zoning ordinance book for adoption. The ordinances had been drawn up with the advice of the city engineer and city attorney to harmonize with those of American Fork. Many people felt that the zoning ordinances were unfair, since Alpine was such a small city and did not need regulations, as did larger cities. For some reason, the ordinances were not enforced at this time like they should have been, even though the book had been printed and stored in a vault in the city hall, which I thought was pretty funny. So, you know, so we come here every two weeks, or two weeks out of the month, and talk about that, and we're going to be talking about these ordinances today. So I just thought I would share that with my fellow commission members, and anybody who's watching online, and, and the citizens that are here, so they can kind of see where we've gone, come from in the last seventy years. Okay? Thanks, Ryan.
That was great. I think if we pass any of these tonight, we should print them off and store them in the vault.
Exactly.
Just for safekeeping.
Okay, do we have any reports or other presentations? Okay, so we will go, we have four different items on tonight's agenda, will all require a public hearing. And so let's just start with the first one, which is the amendment to the Alpine Development Code three dash zero one dash zero six zero. Right?
Yeah, so these are, these are all just some, some cleanup ones, as we go throughout the, the time when we're reviewing different codes, we, we try to clean them up from, from time to time, just to, to make sure that they're best practice and, and so forth. So, so this is one that we've looked at, as far as site plan requirements. Some of it, so, so right now, there's a requirement, I can maybe pull this up, this might be easier. So right now, number four, our first change, is just the, it says, on your site plan, you need to show the location of all existing structures on the subject property, which, which we do require those. And then it want, right now, it says, and adjoining properties, you would have to show their structures and things like that, which is fine. Our code just doesn't say we can take those into consideration when we, when we review, like if someone were to come in with a, a new home, or a garage, or anything, we look at, on our end, we look at setback, we look at height, and Jason and Shane look at utilities, placement, different things like that, on these, on the first end of these. So this first change, just because, like I said, if they don't show it, it doesn't really impact our review, because there's nothing really we can, we can take into consideration. When there's wildlife, not wildlife, if there's like a barn or structures for, for animals, that goes into consideration, is, is they can't be so many feet within a neighboring, but we already have that in the code, that they have to require that, that they have to do that. So this won't impact that at all. The next one, this, this number six here, it wants to show the, the average slope of the lot based on the application, so we've got a formula that we do there. For a new builds, if they're in an approved subdivision, we've already looked at that as part of the subdivision review process, so this is, this is a repetitive step. So what we're saying on this, if it's not an approved subdivision, they would have to, they would have to show that to do it. Most of them aren't an approved. If there's one lot, so we get these all the time, we call them one lot subdivisions, that if it's not, for whatever reason, part of an approved subdivision, we, we have them go through a subdivision type process, where they, you know, give us utilities and, or public utility easements, different things like that. So they would still be required to show us the, the lot size for that. And if it's, you know, they're adding a barn, or different things like that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't require that as well. So this one, number seven, we, we cross this out, location, proposed construction and improvements, including the location of all landscape elements and signs, that's pretty repetitive, because we, we require setbacks in height to be shown, so they're already showing that. So that's just a repetitive requirement there. The rest of these, it's just, it's just renumbering them, because, because of that change. So that's all we've, that's all we're proposing, is part of that, just to, just to simplify it a little bit, while at the same time, we're not losing the, the main points and the things that we, we look at at that. So any, happy to take any questions. This is a public hearing, so we'll, we'll have to do that part as well, but if there's any questions, I can help clarify.
So if you can go down a couple pages, Ryan. So seven was eliminated, and you talked about that it's already repetitive, because we cover setbacks and height requirements, but this one specifically talks about location of all landscape elements and signs, but...
Yeah, so, so with, with these, with landscaping stuff, the only thing we can, we can really look at is, is like, in certain areas, they can't have so much landscaping, like you can't have five acres, just of pure grass. So we do have limits on, on some of those. But we, the signs, I don't, I don't know what they were getting at with signs, I don't, I don't, we don't, I mean, if swept signs, you have out saying that you've got, you've got those, but they're, they're required to do that anyway, this isn't, this isn't taking anything there. Landscaping elements, there's really nothing that we would, we would be looking at as part of, part of the approval process.
Don't, don't we have in the ordinance a requirement to not put water, vegetation in the, in the...
In the park strip, yeah. And that's just something we, that's already part of, of that anyway. So this, this is again, just a repetitive.
And retaining walls, and all that already has in our other code.
Yep, yep. So if someone came in and they, like, if they had a new build on a house, if they had to have, like, like if they had retaining walls, the house, a pool, whatever else they have on there, we would require separate permits for all those. So we don't, we don't do an all-in-one permit on those, so this, yeah, but everything that we would look at is still, still required and still part of other sections of the code.
Yeah, because this section is specific to the site plan that gets submitted.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, any other question, general questions, before I open it up to public comment?
So six is in addition, not a... No, six, six was already there. We just added that part in the front, that said, if not in an approved subdivision, they would have to, but the other part was there, where they would have to show the average slope.
Okay, any other question, general questions? Okay, so we would like to open up this specific change, as Ryan has outlined, to the public. If you have a comment, please come to the, to the podium, state your name and your address clearly, so that it can be recorded. Thanks.
Hello, Andrew Young. This is the first time I'm seeing this, so. Thirteen seventy-one, four ninety south, Alpine. Thank you all for what you're doing. This is the first time, I'm just looking at, I just, and I could be wrong, Ryan, on the number four, where you're saying, and adjoining, and adjoining properties, is that something that's not helpful to see on the plan?
So with the public hearing, you can, you can address them, yeah, and then, and then at the end, Andrew, I'm not, I'm not saying we're not going to answer that, just at the end, we'll, at the end, we can, we'll take notes, and we'll try to answer them all at once, but...
Okay, so I guess the, the only thought I had is, as I've been visiting a lot of neighbors, they're so concerned about their views, they're so concerned about also revamp, revamps of their, of homes, that they might move into a home, and then the home, or the neighbors that they've lived around for many years, someone will demolish it and build a new home. I just think there might be some productive usage of having the surrounding properties for a couple reasons that people have brought up often lately, and that is their views. It's one of the most beautiful places to live, and if you can see the adjoining properties, you might be able to take into consideration the north mountain, some of the east mountain, some of the trails, and that might help you make a better decision when you're approving, especially if later on, we make code that does protect views, it might, you might want some of those adjoining buildings. I, I would say that information wouldn't be hurtful and could be helpful, just a consideration, no, no heavy opinion. And then, yeah, yeah, I'll leave it at that for now, so hopefully that helps in some of your thoughts.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that, with no other public comment, we will close that portion of this, and then we will let Ryan respond to that, and then we will open it up for discussion within the commission members.
Yeah, so, so with that, our code doesn't, we just have to consider, like I said, for this main part, like setbacks in height. We, we, if, if we do have a, if we do have a code section later that, that takes into consideration views, we can certainly, certainly do that, but the code that we have written right now, doesn't, doesn't really impact, I mean, there's just no, we can't really impact, or, or base our decision based off the neighbor's property. It just doesn't allow us the way it's written right now. So yeah, we just, like I said, having on theirs would, would be helpful, to see like, if, for views, different things like that, but our code doesn't give us the ability to say, you can't have this here. If it meets, if it meets code, right, if it meets setback, meets height, our code doesn't, we, we have to approve it.
Correct.
So even if it did impact those, and we are working on certain things that, that would better protect views, we're working on, right now, we, we take measurements from the average finished grade to the, to the, if it's an accessory structure to the top of the roof, if it's a home, it's the midpoint, we're looking at adding language that, we take those from more of a natural grade, or saying you can't raise your property up within so many feet of a natural grade, different things like that, that our, our hope and our intent is that makes, makes better neighbors out of all of us as we, as we do that. But as the way the code's written right now, if it met setbacks in height, and, and utilities and different things like that, we would have to approve that regarding this.
Okay, okay, thanks, Ryan.
Did you want anything, Jason, sorry?
I add to that, I see Andrew's point, and I thought kind of the same thing as I was first looking at this, but this sometimes adds extra work that the developers or the homeowners need to put on these plans, and now they're having to survey at times their neighbor's property.
Yeah.
And that's another reason we looked at taking it out, is it's not, that's not needed for what we're reviewing for.
Correct, thanks, Jason. Okay, let's open it up for discussion, any comments on these changes for this particular development code?
It seems, seems to make sense, because they can't do anything about, you know, the neighbors anyway, and stuff, so I think that, I think everything makes sense that you've done. My opinion.
Michelle?
Why was it there in the beginning? Sorry.
I, I, I don't know, I'm not, it's me, I don't know why they have that.
It's been there for a while, and there's no history of why it was there.
We, we went over these with, with Shane Sorenson, who's the city administrator, he was the city engineer, he's been here for thirty years, he was kind of like, yeah, I don't, I don't know why we, why we'd have those, so. I think, and Andrew, that, it's, it's a great point, a great, great discussion on that, that, you know, we, we would like to take that into consideration, but right now, our, our code just doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, you know, kind of along those lines, Michelle, Ryan, when we, when we, I mean, obviously, we record these, you know, we have, Marla records the minutes, but do we, do we have some kind of record that is like, on such and such day, we made changes? I mean, it doesn't have to be exhaustive, but we made changes to code number three point zero one point zero six.
Yeah, it, sometimes yes, and sometimes they were so, not old, but so long ago, that the record wasn't...
Yeah, I mean, now, I mean, I'm talking now.
Yeah, now we do, yeah, now, now, yeah, now, Marla does a fantastic job, and she does with the city council of, of making record of those.
Yeah.
So it is really helpful, so most of these are ordinance, like when this go, if, if the city council were to approve this, it would get an ordinance number, you know, it would be twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, or whatever it would be.
Okay, okay, excellent.
And at the end of these, let's see if I, I just cop, I just copied and pasted this from, from our code, but at the end, it'll say, modified by ordinance, whatever, and usually we can go back and do those, but there are some that the record, I mean, if, if it was in the nineties or, or earlier, and even early two thousand, sometimes it just, and they made a change to the code, and it was, or they, or they, it'll say, like, we, we amended this section, it's like, well, what did you amend?
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
It's getting better, for sure, but yeah, we just, sometimes those older records just don't have the greatest.
Anything else, Michelle? John?
I would just comment that we have the ordinances of setbacks and heights, for the very purpose of protecting view corridors, and any time that an exception has been asked for either of those items, they're usually not granted for that purpose, but when they are, the adjoining property owners have weighed in to decide if they object to their view corridors being impaired upon. So I think, I think our ordinances are working well, without getting more granular.
Yeah, good point, John. Seuss?
We could never provide any contingency that's going to come along. I mean, we just don't know, you don't, you might have somebody who's so bad about, and sometimes that's just, you gotta, when they were the neighbor, if we've already got the codes and we're sticking to them, that's really important, and we try hard, but I know sometimes it can get so ugly, and sometimes it's just like, why don't you take that to your neighbor? Why start there? You know, when it's, when it's just all about them.
Yeah.
So I like things in a place, I think it may be, it may be time to change it, but we really have been very understanding to people who think that they're, you know, being treated unfairly or something.
Yeah.
The codes are all of the processes, we're here to make sure how it's right.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
What are your thoughts, Jeff?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm, I totally support the, the changes and the simplification of, of this particular piece of code, development code. Okay, well, I, with that, if there are no more comments, I will entertain a motion for this particular item.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Gotcha, sorry.
I move to recommend approval, the proposed code amendment to Alpine Development Code number three dot zero one dot zero six zero, as presented, based on the findings, that it is consistent with the general plan and complies with city code and policies.
Okay, we have a motion by John McKay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Seuss Whittenburg. Discussion on the motion by John. Okay, hearing none, take a vote, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll go on to the second item.
Yeah, again, just a, just a quick clarification and cleanup on these. Right now, in our appeal, appeal authority requirements that we have, these are, these are very heavy, heavily regulated by the state, as far as what, what we can do and can't do. This just adds language, saying that for an application for the appeal authority, so this is if someone, we're asking for a variance, we have a third-party hearing officer that hears these, or if an appeal to a land use decision, so whoever, you know, any, any administrative land use decision, if someone wanted to appeal that, we have this hearing officer for that as well. We're just adding this language, for it to be considered complete, the required form and all associated fees must be submitted to Alpine City within that, that timeframe. So usually, like on an appeal to a land use decision, they have to submit something within ten days. It's just saying that form has to be complete, the fees have to be paid, in order to be considered complete. Lots of people don't know there's fees with these, there's a lot of time and resources that go into these, so this, this just helps make them aware of that, in, in saying that, make sure we get paid before we, before it goes to the hearing officer for their time as well.
I'm sorry, what was her name, officer again?
Her name's, right now, it's, her name's Angela Adams, she's a, she's an attorney that lives here in town. So that's a change, we just, we just want to make sure those fees are paid and, and completed application before they go too far, so.
And the designated timeframe, that varies depending on...
That's spelled out, yeah, usually it's within ten days. For a variance, for a variance, there's no real timeframe on it, because if, if you came in today and said, I want to do this, and I need a variance, we would just, we would just do it within that time. For a, for a, for an appeal, so if we made a decision today, in most cases, they have ten days to, to appeal that and do that. So we're just saying, within that ten days, fees paid, completed application.
Sounds good. Any general questions, Michelle?
How often does this happen?
Not that often. The first year I was here for variances, we, I think we had eight or nine, which is unheard of. I think almost all of them were, were turned away, because they didn't, the state requires for variances, there's five standards that you have to meet in order to, to meet that. Most of them couldn't, couldn't meet that, so it was, they were, they were turned away. Land use appeals in three years, I think we've had two, so it's not. My favorite story in a town I used to work in, someone came in for a variance, we had a three-member board, and two of the people on that board had died. So this is not something that is used that often to, to do this, so, but, but when it is, just important to make sure they have the right paperwork and fees paid, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other general questions before we open up to public comment? Okay, so again, I, we opened this up to public comment on this particular addition to this piece of development code. So if you have, if you would like to comment on that, we welcome you to come to the front, state your name and your address, please.
I'm going to go with thirteen seventy-nine, so apologies actually to speak on this again, but I just hope to provide some information, so that might help. So there is a resident who has to make a variance right now, and I didn't know about this, so I'm going to, he came very distraught about how expensive it was, and that the city, oh, there you go, and that the city needed quite a bit of money, told him to go get a lawyer, or to get this variance. I believe that's the process, right? I, I, I'm sorry, I can't address him, I apologize.
No, no, and I, I can, yeah.
Yes, please clarify. So anyways, he wants to, so this might help in your discussion, he's trying to add a garage to his house. Now, I personally am not a fan of anything that goes against the code, but he has no neighbors, and he's gotten neighbor approval, well, I'm sorry, he has no neighbor on the back, and two on the side, he's gotten neighbor approval, but he just expressed over and over frustration to me about how difficult it was to work with a, a sort of variance, because he's about three to five feet over on his setback, I believe it's called a setback? So he's about three to five feet over on his setback, and so I guess, I guess what, what the lesson I learned, or what the pass on is, it's a pretty brutal process for this resident. He's told, and I don't know if we can fix the process, or add something to it that includes neighborhood approval, or some sort of easier way for financing of it, but he was told, in order to do this, which has neighbor approval, and the only reason he does have a setback is because the neighbor that sold it to him that lives across changed the boundary line. So there is no one behind, so it, it really is a gray area, this is a really gray area. There's no one behind the, the, it's in the old Merlin Fish House, if you want to know where this is, on the east, east side. So it was divided, he wants to put in his garage, and he's a couple feet off, and so he came to the city, and they, he was told, he needs to get a lawyer, pay a large fee, and that fee really made him frustrated, and so anyways, that's, that's the current situation, I don't know how to help him. I don't know if I need to get him a lawyer to even see the board, I don't know if the residents know the process. I'm also strongly for the code, so I don't actually necessarily think it should happen, but in the gray areas, there's not an easy way for a resident to carry out one of these for cost and for the process. So if there's anything you'd help, I bet that would help them.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Anybody else like to comment? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment for this particular item. Ryan?
Do you want me to, yeah, so, so with the process, it's very, like I said, it's very regulated by the state, they give us, this is the process you have to follow, these are the standards you have to meet, I believe there's five of them, that say this is what you have to meet. We don't require an attorney to, to be part of that, I mean, we've had, we've had, I don't think, in any of the variances, unless they themselves were an attorney, I don't think we've had anyone else have an attorney present to do that. Again, most of the time, we just say, here's the five standards, there's the, excuse me, there's the form you fill out, here's the five standards, tell us how you meet those or, or not, it's kind of a self-selection, or self, self, if you can't meet the five standards, why go through the process? Yes, we don't require those, I, I, I don't know if anyone's coming to talk to me about, I think people get variances and setbacks, or variances and exceptions confused.
Yes.
A variance is a process very heavily regulated by the state, an exception, there has to be language in the code that says, you know, planning commissioner, city staff, or city council can grant these exceptions. So process-wise, there's not a whole lot we can do on that, just because... Um, so process-wise, there's not a whole lot we can do on that, just because it's very heavy, heavily regulated for this, by the state. Our variance fee, it used to be two hundred dollars. Within that first year that I was here, we had so many, because I think a lot of people would go, "Well, it's two hundred dollars, I can, worst-case scenario, I'm out two hundred dollars, best-case scenario, I get, I get what I want." So those, those were raised to five hundred, just because with, with those, there's, we have to send out letters, we have to, in, in this, in variance, the case of a variance, we provide, we're the ones that send out the envelopes, the stamps, the letters, all those, in some cases, it's, and we have to meet it within, uh, three hundred feet, I believe, for variance. Um, so we have to send, lots of times, it's thirty or forty of those letters. Staff time to do that, the variance, uh, or the, the appeal officer's time, uh, there's, there's associated fees. We checked before we changed those fees with everyone around us, and kind of in, in Utah County in general that are similar size, and that was kind of the going rate, uh, the, they had for those as well. So we tried to be reasonable with that, but at the same time, um, with, within the, within the requirements there. Ev- everyone has setbacks, uh, they're meet, they're not, they're not by different, different areas, um, that would have to be, have to be met with those. Um, a- and again, with the variance, what you're trying to show is there's something, I, I use the, I said it, something weird with your law, or something wrong with your law, that's, so like, if there was a gas line that went through your backyard that made it so, "I can't build on that, so I need an exception to the front setback, because I have to move my house up." Or there's, you know, a, a slope in the back of my yard, uh, you know, either way, uh, that was there before me, or that was, that was natural cause, that makes it so I can't, I can't build like everyone else can. Those are what variances are, are really meant to solve. So yeah, that's, and like I said, the, the process is very, very heavily regulated by the state, we just have to, have to follow those standards. Was there anything else I missed with that, or any clarification needed on, on those?
I think that, I think that's good.
And I, if, if, if you wanna give this guy our contact information, I'd be happy to, happy to walk through it with him, so.
It sounds like the citizen is confused between, uh, exceptions and a variance.
And, yeah.
Variance, and he's not, what we're talking about here is after they've gone through the request for an exception. Uh, and it doesn't sound like he's even done that.
So if we have to, it has to be in our code that, like, city council or whoever can grant an exception. Um, there's no fees with those, you just have to go through the process, so like, most of the time, it's, like, if it says the planning commission can grant an exception, they would just have to come before the planning commission and do those. Yeah.
That, that's, that's would be my guess.
I haven't had anyone, I mean, lots of times, people go, "I need a variance for that," and I go, "Okay, well, here's, here's the process," and it doesn't, doesn't go very far after that. If you wanna give my contact information, I'd be happy to, happy to do that, so. But yeah, this is, this, this change is just saying, for an application to be considered complete, we need a completed application and the fees paid before we...
Yeah, we take that. Um, questions for Ryan, Troy, Michelle, Suze?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, on variances and land use appeals, there's a third party that, that we do that, so we don't, we don't do that, so. Yeah, she's been, she's been good.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I don't recall ever an attorney representing, uh, petitioner saying, "I'm, I'm the attorney." Yeah, yeah, that's not required. In fact, we prefer the person, or persons.
You're gonna say Alan's not here, so if someone wants to make an attorney joke, I think that would be appropriate.
We're not making an attorney joke. Okay, any more questions for Ryan? Uh, if not, I will entertain a motion if there's not any more discussion. Okay, Suze? Okay, we have a motion by Suze Whittenburg. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Troy Slade. Okay, any discussions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of, uh, Suze, uh, Susan's motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motions carries unanimously. Okay, Ryan, next item?
Yeah, so this one, this one again, is just to bring us into compliance with required state code. So in State Code Ten Nine Eight Three O Five, it's this line seven A, there's language in there that says, "All charter schools, home-based micro schools, and micro education entities, uh, are permitted, are, are to be considered permitted uses in all zoning districts within a, within a municipality." This code change is just to bring us in compliance with that, uh, requirement there. Uh, I don't know if, I, most of you are here, I don't know if you remember when we did the subdivision updates, the state said, "Thou shalt do it this way."
Yeah.
Um, and we had to do that, uh, even, what, what's hard about those is, is the city, if we, if we didn't do this, the state code would still prevail over, over what we have, so. That's part one of this change, I'm just gonna scroll down and just kinda show you, we just, we just took this straight from state code, the, the blue is the, uh, the attorney reviews these as well, so these are some things, the things that he added. So they can still be subject to, to, the three point two zero, uh, is the section in our code that regulates schools, uh, as far as, you know, traffic. Well, we, we went over these two weeks ago, um, so they, they would still be subject to those. But this is, and this is just an example, and this is what the language we would have in every, every zone, just because that's what, that's what it requires. Um, part two, the change of this, uh, so right now, we have it as schools kinda lumped together with other, other public or quasi-public, uh, groups. If you remember, a couple years ago, we created the public facility zone. At the time, at the time, it was, so if a, if a, the, the main emphasis of that was, if, if a school were to close down tomorrow, they had residential zoning right now, so it's, and we use Alpine Elementary as the example. If Alpine, we're not saying Alpine Elementary's closing down, no one, no one, we just use the example. If they were to close down today, at the time, if they were to close down that day, come in the next day, say, "We're gonna, we want," I think it was thirty-something homes they could put there. At the time, the thinking was, that's a big enough change that it should, should require a, a zone change request, a change in use. This is, this is kind of the, the reverse of that, uh, where public schools weren't specifically listed as a permitted use in all zones, we're gonna take them out as conditional uses in all zones, so if they were, but they are permitted uses in that public facility zone. So if a public school wanted to buy five or six houses and tear them down and build a school, they could do that, it would just be a rezone process, kind of what we have for a public facility zone, so, planning commission, city council could still, uh, again, get feedback, do a public hearing process, and, and go through that request for a rezone. We felt like this just gave the city more of a, more of a say in that than if, if a school were just to come in and say, "We wanna do that." So, those are the changes, this will be, like I said, these will be in, in all the zones that they have them right now. But again, it just, it just brings us into compliance with, with state code. They still have to meet those same requirements we have in three point two zero, uh, that the state allows us to regulate with those, but, um, that's just the proposed change that we have for now, so. Any questions or anything on that?
Okay, general, general questions to Ryan before we open up?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's also defined in state code as well, uh, that we would just have to follow what those are, those are defined as. So, so a micro school is sixteen students or less, it's someone's primary home. Uh, a micro, what's the other one, micro education entity is anything more than sixteen, and then there's different standards that we have with those. So yeah, we would, we would rely on state code definition of those to, to do those. So they would still have to meet parking requirements, yeah, which is, so if, if they had, I'm just throwing out numbers, if they had, if they had, you know, sixteen students and two staff, our code says they have to have point two parking stalls per students and staff, so we would just figure that out, and they would, they would still have to meet that. Traffic patterns, they'd still have to show us how they're gonna meet those, um, so yeah, we would still, and then anything with, with public safety, health and safety, they would still have to, the state says we can, we can regulate those as well. They have to get a business license. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then like that hours there?
So hours of operations is another one that we can, yeah, yeah, hours of operation is something that we, as a city, can, can say, "We wanna see those," and make sure that they're, you know, from ten PM to three AM or something. Yeah, the state says we can, we can regulate those as well.
Also, we do have some saying that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
So if they needed to get a business license, would they be coming before us here?
No, business licenses, again, if it's a permitted use, they have to come through.
Because, okay, 'cause a home occupation business comes to us here, but because they are a permitted use, they don't need to, they go straight to you.
Yeah, we were just, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason, the reason, so yeah, you're right, in a home occupation, if people come to the home, we have it in our, in our code because it's a conditional use permit.
'Cause it's conditional, but this is permitted.
They have to go to you guys, but where the state says we have to have these as permitted uses.
Okay.
And if the state, if the state ever changes this, I think they just, it was last year, that they, they made a bunch of changes to these micro schools and micro education entities, so, uh, we just, we're just catching up.
And as far as you know, do the ones in Alpine all comply?
I don't know if we have any technically that are, that have come before us and that are, have gone through that process. We've got one that's going through the process of one right now, but that's the only one that I'm aware of, that they...
That's okay.
It's the one on, on Bateman.
Yeah.
That's the only one that, that's the only one that's come through the, the process of that.
So, okay, so when they go through the process, would the city prefer them to go through the process before they start holding school?
Yeah, so that, part of it's they have to have a business license, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't issue a business license until all those things have been, have been met, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Again, this is, this is one of the, not to say the heavy hand of the state, but the state says you, you have to.
Right.
And I'm not, not, not to your specifically, Michelle, I'm just saying, this generally.
No. Oh, yeah, no, I can see that, and so, the Utah state code is listed here, and what's, sorry, what's DCA three point two?
Development, it's, instead of saying Alpine Development Code, in our code, it says Development Code Alpine, which, whatever, but, uh, DCA is just a shorthand. Three point two zero is, three point two zero is a section that regulates schools.
The section that regulates schools, I guess I just seen that flipped, sorry. It's been a long week.
No, I'm with you. Every time I'm like, no, it's, if I reference it longhand, it's Alpine Development Code, but then in the code, it references DCA, so it's, it's an ongoing battle I have, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other general questions before I open it up to public comment? Okay, uh, now I'd like to open up to public comment. Uh, again, if you have a comment on this, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Andrew Young, thirteen seventy-one East Four Ninety South. I promise, I'm not trying to drag this meeting on. I'm amazed how applicable all these are for what, uh, the residents are bringing up daily. Uh, we do, I, so a couple of questions and a couple of thoughts that may or may not help. And I hope this is helpful, if it's not, just shut me down, turn off the mic. There is one micro school trying to be put in that I've found out about, uh, down by the roundabout. So, uh, and then a couple of questions. Ryan, uh, pardon me, I'll ask the questions and feel free, anyone to respond that I might not understand, or some of the residents. This is obviously brought up for public comment, but it feels like, uh, it's state law anyways, so what's the point? Like, why are we even like, so, so just think about this, why do we even public comment if this is just state law? Do the residents have any recourse to defend against it, or change something, uh, down on the local level? I know we have a lot of federal things that the state overrides, I know we have a lot of things that the city overrides on the county, and so on, it's not just one way. Is there any background of why the state did this, what they're trying to press on us, has there been any defense for this, or the other two that we're doing? Do we just take it in the, you know what, on everything that comes down to us? Um, I know there's a lot of incentives for some of these, so that's the one question. Is, is this just a formula that we're just going through and we just have to check off? Has there ever been an example where we said, "Um, actually, we've gotta add in our own unique circumstances, given that we're a unique city with three sides surrounded by mountains, and having a school in every single zone probably isn't a good idea, now it's legal, uh, in every single zone, residential, five-acre lot, one-acre lot, quarter-acre lot?" I mean, this is really weird. Um, I, I just feel like I'm out of my place to always have to comment when things are weird, but people just seem to accept it. And then we get weird results and weird consequences, um, anyways, so that's the first question. The, the next question is, do we have any backup on, or background information on who's submitting this to Alpine City? Um, I know it's coming before Shane, and I know it's becoming before Ryan, and it's, uh, directed like it is a, uh, proposal brought up by the city staff, that's how it's said. But I guess in clarification, are there others that are pushing this as well, uh, besides just the city staff? Why this? There's gotta be, I think we passed nearly three hundred state bills last session in January. So there's gotta be other ones, why are we prioritizing this one versus the other three hundred? Good example is, we passed a major law statewide that we have to have a armed security officer in, um... Every school. But I would, I would think that has not come before you, and it has not put it, been put into Alpine City code, and we have not prioritized it. So I'm wondering why we're prioritizing these, is someone nudging you, Ryan, or the city, does someone have some sort of benefit? Is this important? Are we just doing it because it's state code, and who's gonna say no to that? I mean, I'm, you know, who's gonna say no to that? Um, I don't think we know the ramifications of this, and I don't even think we know why they did it on the state level. So anyways, I just hope these are beneficial to consider, and, uh, obviously, we support you in your role of deciding what to do, so thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Hey, any other citizens would like to make a comment? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment on this particular item for schools as permitted use. Uh, Ryan, would you like to respond?
Yep, code change, anytime we change the code, have to do a public hearing, so that's why we have to do this, even if the state, um, if you remember when the subdivision stuff went through, we still had to go through this process. Anytime we change the code, we have to do that. Uh, we could say we don't care what the state does and not do this. Um, what would happen is someone would come in and say, "This has to be permitted use," and if we said, "No, it, it, we're not gonna allow that," uh, probably go to a lawsuit, and we would probably lose because state code trumps, trumps what we're doing.
Correct.
Uh, my understanding was this was something they passed this last legislative session to add these in there, um, to, to get it through. Uh, if there's a, if there's, the process at the state level, the, the city has, well, we're, we're part of what they call the Utah League of Cities and Towns, which is essentially a lobbyist, uh, organization on behalf of cities and towns. If you, if you ever get bored and wanna follow this process, um, state bills in, from what I've seen, start off really, really bad, and then by the end of the process, most of them are less really bad. So they, they, they do these, it goes through a whole process, uh, multiple organizations are involved in, in going through this process, uh, representing cities and towns and everything in, in between to do that. But yeah, they, uh, in most cases, they do give us some, some leeway on, on different things that we can address. With this one, it's pretty black and white, it has to be permitted use, um, to go, to go do that. Who is submitting this? This is just something that, as we've, we've gone through with, with Mountainville, with, with charter schools, is, uh, we're working with a, a micro school on this. This was brought to our attention that we're, we're out of compliance on this. So no one's pushing this, we're not, uh, no one's, no one's pushing this, it's just state code trumped city code, so we're trying to bring city code to line up, to line up with this. I hope it wasn't insinuated that we're getting some kind of kickback from this, there's no, no benefit at all to this, we're just trying to be compliant with state code. Again, there's, there's two hundred and plus cities in Utah that are all fighting to make sure that we're represented in these things. Um, it's not, not just Alpine that, that does this. Any code change, uh, in this situation, again, we're trying to, trying to be in compliance with state codes, that's why it says city staff is, is proposing this, it's just because we're the ones that, no one's, like I said, these schools, they would say the state code trumps you guys, so we don't care what your city code says on this, because state code, uh, would do that. There are, there are tons of laws passed every year, um, a lot of them don't affect the, directly affect cities, that would require us to make these kinda, these kinda changes. Uh, it was brought up, the requirement for an armed guard at schools. Alpine City doesn't do anything with, with schools, that would be the school district that would have to, have to do that. So even if, even if our code said, "You have to have an armed guard at every school," uh, that wouldn't be something that we could enforce, it would have to go through the school district in order to do that. Uh, and again, like I said, there's, there's lots of really bad bills that are brought up at the state level. And again, like I said, there's, there's lots of really bad bills that are brought up at the state level. This League of Cities and Towns is a great job, I think, of trying to balance those out, and we had a committee meeting yesterday. With bills that are bringing up here, that they kind of get the pulse of the, of the representatives there, that, that go to those from leagues, or from. Various cities and towns to, to play a part of that process. So yeah, I, I hope that, that answered all of them, I, just the notes that I took, try to get them all, so.
Thanks, Ryan, yeah, I've, throughout my career, I've been involved in the League of Cities and Towns, so I know how that works, and. Right now, you know, in July and August, and part of September is when all the committees meet. And start talking about various bills, and there are a lot of bills, I understand, and I, I recognize that a lot of them. Get passed, and the vast majority of the citizens of Utah have no clue of what's going on, and. But, you know, hats off to our city staff that pay attention. And, and try to stay ahead of the ball in making sure we're in, in compliance. Because I think following that guidance, we're, we're, we're much better off.
I give you an example too of a bill that was passed that didn't require a code change, they say, if your building inspector can't. Get a building inspection done within three days, we have to have three different groups, or, or people in place, a contractor could call and say. So we, we've done that, there was nothing in our code that needed to be changed with that, so there, there are quite a few that just don't, don't require any, so, any changes that way, so.
Are we allowed to add any provisions to a permitted use, or is it just the only provisions go back to parking? I mean, I mean, is that the only thing we have, we can't add anything about traffic flow, or?
Yeah.
Business licenses approval before they start, like, can we shut them down if they didn't, you know? Is there, is there things we can add to make this a little?
So, yeah, state code says we can do traffic, we can do safety, health and safety, we can do parking, we can do hours of operation. I think there's a fifth, but that's all that's coming to my mind right now, so those are already built, and, and all those are in that three point two zero, bulk enassing, bulk enassing.
So they're already in there. When we talked about Mountainville.
Yeah, that's why we, the, the city attorney put that, or recommended to put that in there, subject to three point two zero, cause then we can rely on those standards as well.
So it just kicks back to those, but there's nothing in there about alerting neighbors that, you know, or vis, you know. Trying to be a good neighbor, cause, I mean, it is important when they come in that.
And that's a.
That there's nothing there about, I don't know, the air quote, be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
The noticing requirement.
The noticing, things like that, there's nothing, and so it just comes.
And that's, that's what's frustrating, the, on, on staff side of, of this, that we've, we've noticed as we've gone through those is, is. They have to be permitted uses in any, any zone within the city, so, yeah, if, if it's in a residential neighborhood. And they meet those requirements, there's really no, no kickback, no, you know what I mean, no, no public hearing that's required.
There's no three hundred yards, you get a notice, there's no sign, there's, it's just boom, and we can't add that to those. Seven things of.
Not that I'm aware, and, and a, a point was brought up, and it, it's a, it's a really valid point, some of these, we just, I mean, there's. There's just requirements that we have to meet in order to do that, and this, this is one that, and if you were here again for the subdivision review process. It's really frustrating, because the subdivision review, review process says, you can go ahead and have a public hearing during the preliminary side of it. But if they meet the code and they meet everything, you have to approve it.
That's correct.
So it's like, we, we didn't want to give the false hope that this can be changed if enough.
Right.
You know, when state codes is if they meet these requirements, we have to, we have to approve it. Yeah, and, and if, yeah, yep, so he, yeah, if you, if you just let Don know. We've, we've got that report of concern in the code compliance section of the, of the website, you can go on there and just say, hey, we, we think this is a school. He'll look into it and make sure that. You should, you should, you should.
Uh, other questions to Ryan, Troy, any, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
John, any questions?
That, that's where our frustration came into is.
Yeah.
There's no, there's, I mean, that's a, like I said, we, we created this public facility zone a couple of years ago, cause we felt like that was a big enough, big enough change. That they would, they would need to do that, but. I mean, yeah, we're just bringing us into compliance with the states, right?
Exactly.
It's, it's what it is.
Yeah, the law was passed, and we have to have language that is, is a permitted use.
We wanted to change things, would have to go a whole different route, or whatever, I mean, yeah.
Likely, yeah, and, you know, and like, like Ryan said, you know, the, the League of Cities and Towns, that's kind of their pro, that's kind of their. Purpose, and, you know, so.
Right.
It's quite possible that, that, that organization could go, we don't like this, and there's enough people, and then they would lobby. And, you know, and the code could be changed at the state, at the state level, so it's quite possible, and it, and it does happen. So that, that's how things happen, and like Ryan said, you know, a lot of times, bad laws get passed, and. Usually, the bad laws get discussed, tabled, come back the next year, get modified, get tabled, get modified, and then passed after. Two or three years, you know, unless somebody at the eleventh hour sneaks something in and goes, ah, I've got that in, so. Okay, if there are no more, if there's no more discussion, I will entertain a motion for the schools as permitted use.
I can make a motion?
Okay, Troy.
I motion to recommend approval, or I move to recommend approval. Of the proposed code, amendment to Alpine City Code, section three point oh two, point zero two zero. Wow, do I really gotta go through all these numbers?
You can just say as proposed, with those sections, yeah.
Okay, as proposed, should I continue on with the? Like as presented, okay, as presented or as proposed, finding that the amendment is required by Utah State Code. As written. And is consistent with the general plan, city code, and applicable city policies.
Okay, we have a motion by Troy Slade, do I have a second?
I'll second.
No, we have a second by John McKay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing done, all those in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, okay, our last item, a public hearing, I turn the time over to Ryan.
Yeah, again, just, just one more cleanup is something we've seen, this is just adding a definition, so we're not changing or altering any other definitions, we're just adding a definition. What a front yard on a corner lot would be, we, we've, we've recently seen house plans submitted on corner lots that. They wanna, because of setbacks, they wanna say this side's the front yard, and this side's the side yard. That, that just caused some, some issues, I did a lovely drawing over there that took all my artistic ability. And I apologize, it's, I could see it when I was up close, but, uh, back here, so, this is one that we had come in recently, you can see the house is kind of. I don't wanna say cockeyed, crooked, so what they wanna do, the, the bottom, the bottom is, is obviously a side. So our, with a, with a corner lot, we say any side that abuts a street has to have a thirty foot setback, so that's, that's not an issue at all. So those two sides that abut a street would have to have thirty foot setback, the issue is the, the street on the left there that you can see. I think it's in red, but I can't really see it from here, but if they say that's the front yard, the corner one on the very top now becomes the side yard. And, and can have a twelve foot setback, which is quite a bit closer to the neighboring yard. If they say the longer one is the front yard, that becomes the rear yard at the very top, and, and now has a thirty foot setback. So we recently had this come in, and, and we just don't have any better language, it says this is your designated front yard versus side yard. You can clearly see the, the front yard should be that longer side, and the, the side should be, should be there. In this particular case as well, the, the front door came off that longer side on the bottom there, on the side, they had a, a side yard to a. To a garage, I think is what it was over there, but we just didn't have any better language saying, no, this is actually your front yard. So, so what we're, what we're proposing is just giving us language saying, this is what is considered a front yard versus side yard. Our issue is, if it's a, so if their, if their address is off that shorter side, the, on the left there, that's where Amazon packages are gonna go. That's where public safety is gonna show up if there's any issues, is, is where that front, front yard is. But if their address is off the other street, it's gonna cause some, some issues that way, so what we're proposing on this is, is just this definition that we would add. So we would take into consideration the orientation of the principal building primarily facing the yard, so in this case, we could say your front door is off this. This side, the official address assigned to the property, so technically, each side, every corner lot is assigned two different addresses. And one, one is assigned as part of that, you can always go and, and change your address, you can do an, an amendment to do that. But taking into consideration the official address of the home, again, the location of the front door, main entrance of the principal building. And then if, if none of those can clearly identify that, it would be the, the yard adjacent to the street with the longest continuous street frontage. Shall be deemed the front yard, so this just kind of clarifies, makes it a little easier to understand, this is what our front yard is versus side yard, just so that. Again, this is one that kind of takes into consideration impact of, of neighboring properties, just because. There's quite a bit of difference of a twelve yard, or a twelve foot setback versus a thirty foot setback on there. Uh, in this case, the, the lot to the, the north there, obviously, their side yard would be, would be on the si, on this, on this bottom part there. So right now, there's no homes on either, either of the lots, yep, yep, yep. So they, they still can at this point, right, like, they could come in, so our, our issue with this too, so they, the street going up and down, I'm just gonna. I've got it pulled up here, so, so this area, the way it is, the front, the front doors on this side. We have a, my, what's gonna happen is in, someone's gonna live in this house for a year, they're gonna say, all my Amazon packages go to my. Side door, because that's technically our address, I want to change my address to this, this other street, so they can do that. What's hard with that is they just got the, kind of having your cake and eating it too, they just got the shorter side yard there. And the address to be, to be how they wanted it, so again, this, this just, so they, they technically could come in and, and do a change of that. With this, it would make it a little more, oh yeah, that is the, the front yard there. And, and it, with the process to go through that, I think we could say, well, no, this is clearly your, your front door. I don't, I don't know if anyone would come in after building permit and say. Right, right, but with, with the new change, I mean, like, if, if it's clearly the front yard, if it's clearly the front doors there. Our, our hope is that it just makes it a little more, but that's not your front, we've, we've had some, there was, I don't know if you remember, there was one. That liked the number eight, so they wanted to change their address to eight, 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 whatever the street, stuff like that would be fine, this wouldn't impact that at all. It's just more the orientation of, of what the address actually is.
So using this, this existing home that's kind of diagonal across that block, describe the setbacks that are in place there.
For this one?
Same, same.
Across.
The fake one.
Continuous block, but this lot's in.
With this one?
No, keep going, down, down, down.
All the, all the way to the bottom, you're talking about.
Down, take your cursor and go north.
Okay.
Keep, keep your zoom.
This one, or this one? That one?
Now go up from there.
Yep, so this, this would.
Oh, the other corner lot.
There's only so many corners, guys. So, and, and some of these, like I said, they might, they might have been there before we had the thirty foot setback, so I'm not, and they look smaller, so, this would be thirty. This would be thirty, in this case, so, so with this one that we're looking at, I'm just gonna use this tool as an example, I'm really not measuring anything, so with. So with this. Where it kind of splits it like this, this is a good example, actually, they had, they had it more, like, the front, the front door was more. It was just obvious that it was on this longer street, so even if you split it, so like, they're, they wanted, and I'm just, they wanted this side to be the front yard. Front doors, you know, somewhere over here, that's where they would go, but they would say, oh, look, this is my front, front side there, but. With this one, thirty on this side, thirty on this side, from the street, I'm guessing they were given this as the side yard. And then this would be, this would be rear, but corner lots are just tricky, because they, most people wanna. Build them a certain way and use every square inch, so they orient them a little different, so.
So that's not thirty feet, oh, sorry, that's not thirty feet from that other street, is it? Like the.
It should be.
The one up, the one up?
Like this one?
No, no, I'm sorry, it's the same house.
Okay.
Same property, but that, yeah, the, the street you're pointing at, that's not thirty feet from there, is it?
Uh, it should be, some of these, where this is located too, was built in the county, so some of them might not have, they might have been built before they were. Annexed into the city, so they might have had different setbacks.
I mean, maybe it is, like, sorry.
I would be shocked, that doesn't look like thirty feet to me, but that one might be, but again, some of these, this is, this is an area that was annexed into the city, so some of them might have been. Some of them might have been that way, but. Again, we're just.
What I'm trying to understand is how this new language would change this.
With this one, I don't, not knowing where the front door is, not knowing anything like that.
Zoom is right where your cursor is.
Yeah, if it's, if this is the front door, which it probably is, somewhere in this area. This would just give us to where, this one, this one, it might not really impact, but, but these certain other ones, it, it definitely will. But yeah, if this, if the front door's here, it would probably just be, okay, this one doesn't really, either way, it's fine on the front yard. There are some of them though, that it would, like I said, I, I wish we had the, the plans for this other one, cause it was, it's very clearly, like, front door is here. There's maybe a side door that goes into a garage here.
And they want, they want that short side to be the front.
They wanna say, so they want a twelve foot setback here.
Right, instead of thirty.
Versus what would be a thirty foot.
They call that their side.
Yep, I don't know how you can tell that from a beautiful drawing, Sue's, but that's, no. But yeah, they, they wanted a bigger side yard, again, this, we're, what we're trying to do is just say, what a, what a reasonable person would say, this is my front door. This is my front yard, and trying to, like I said, in a year, they're gonna come back and say, I want to change this, because all my Amazon packages are coming to the side. Or they can't be delivered, cause they can't find my address, because, so we're just trying to clean this up a little bit, so it's a little more, a little easier to understand.
So they're still welcome to come in and change the address, but the setback requirements would have already, would have already happened.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
So they, they really, this should be their, their front address. But it's not, so.
What'd you say, Marah?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so the city would have to send something into the county, the county would have to be okay with it, the post office would have to be okay with it, public safety. Yeah.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we have the same situation that we, we deal with over and over again, homes get built in the county. And then it gets incorporated, or possibly incorporated into the city, and now there's tougher requirements. That's just the fact of life, so, so, yeah, so that, that makes sense. Okay, any, any other questions to Ryan about this language?
And this won't impact like existing homes, it's only really for, for new builds, we're just saying, we want a little, we want to clarify a little bit more of, of what a. Front yard is on a corner lot versus, versus a side yard.
Besides the setback issue, Ryan, are, are there any other ramifications that we're trying to? Besides the setback issue, Ryan, are, are there any other ramifications that we're trying to make sure we don't have issues with?
It's, it's primarily setbacks. Like I said, the way this is, the, the, a lot of times, we're trying to fit a, too big of a house on a, on a lot that it just won't fit. So, mainly, it's, it's setbacks and making it a little clearer that, uh, yeah, that's, that's fair, that's fair. So, yeah, we're just trying to clarify, just for setback purposes, what, what the deal is, so. And again, this one, where they would have a twelve foot setback here, uh, be a little close to where it should, really should be a thirty foot in that case.
That's correct, yeah. So, they would have the option of coming in for an exception, right?
Well, they could, they could change the, they could change their address, for sure.
Yeah, sure.
To, to do that, but we, we don't have language of saying, so it's just saying, these are, these are what we're taking into consideration when we, when a, when a front yard is identified on a corner lot.
Did you have any comments or questions, Troy?
It makes sense, I think.
Okay, Michelle? John? Suze? Okay. Okay, well, with that, let's see, did we?
Joining the public hearing.
Yeah, it was like, it was like, we've been discussing all this, cuz I, okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, I was ready to get it, make a motion. So, this being, again, a development code change requires public opinion, public comment, not a public opinion, public comment. So, we would now open it up to, uh, our public to, uh, provide comments. And if you have questions, it'll get noted and Ryan will try to answer that, so. We invite anybody that would like to comment on this piece of development code change.
Built the house out.
Andrew Young, thirteen seventy-one, he's four ninety-seven. I know you're annoyed, I apologize.
We're not annoyed, there's, there's a reason why we have public comment.
I know, but when there's one guy, it's not the public, it's, it's, uh, but, to be honest, I'm, I'm getting a good feel of everyone. They just had, just do questions, and these are not coming from me, first one, not from me. Um, uh, if there's any ability for you to show any examples of this type of thing towards a busy road, like, maybe down by, uh, the Burgess Orchard area, if there's any corner lots around there you could show.
So.
There's a bunch of concerned residents.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, go.
Okay, maybe, uh, towards a busy road, or maybe one that has more commercial on it, when some implications that this could have in that, those areas where you have residential and commercial mixing right now, so some of those. The only thing I saw is that this could impact people's views, I know we have nothing to protect views, I hope to, uh, build something into that in the Alpine community in the future, but when you do these diagonals, you're, you're really on the diagonal edges, really getting close to the edges, so the setbacks are essentially a way of, um, completely overriding, um, uh, you, you, on those corners. So, as you get the corner really close and the corner really close, um, I just, if I was the neighbor, um, I know it's on a corner lot, but not the one above it. Uh, the one above it is still right by the corner of their house, so. I'm all for temples and, like, you know, churches that do this, but, uh, when you get a house that does that and sticks the corner right by it, you might get a view, so.
That's just consideration.
The only question so far, Ryan, was if you could show maybe a couple of, or one, one example, and if you have an area that is near a commercial or where residential mixes, cuz I can foresee, or they could foresee potentially, commercial buildings doing this. I, I might be off my rocker, or maybe it's just residential. And then the last question is, um, if there's any sort of, uh, input into, uh, Ryan or the board or the commission, who is the person or the group bringing up when Alpine is out of compliance? Is that just us, uh, fishing through and finding them, or is that, you noted, you mentioned there was an individual that came and said that we're out of compliance? If we have any access to that information, that might help us to find out, you know, what is the motive and why are they looking for this, uh, out of compliance? Or if it is the state themselves, I, obviously, we could clearly understand that. Um, and then on this, this is pretty clear, that, that would be for the former ones. In this one, it, it must be this homeowner who's bringing it up, is that correct, or is it?
Well, I don't, I don't understand what you're.
The, uh, the resident was asking me to ask, uh, who is it that is promoting this, so in this case?
Are you talking about the setback one on a corner lot, or are you talking about the one we've already talked about?
Well, I guess it would apply to all four of them, uh, when we're out of compliance. Actually, this one isn't out of compliance, this is to add something.
This would be a new one, yeah.
I apologize, it would be for the former three, if there's a que- I wasn't able to ask it, if there was a, um, ability to know who is letting us know when we are out of compliance, does that make sense?
Yeah, so a lot of times, it's, it's.
Just let him, just let him finish.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I thought you were done, I thought you were done.
That's all, I appreciate everything.
Okay, okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment portion of this particular item. Ryan?
Yeah, I guess, I guess if we're, we're out of compliance, um, that was just something as, as staff, as we were looking at, you know, different things with charter schools and with, with these micro, we just noticed that, oh, it says they have to be permitted uses, we have a conditional, we should, we should make that change. Again, uh, if we are out of compliance with, with what the state code requires, that would, that would trump with what, what we have. So, we just thought it better to be in compliance than, than out and cause issues, and again, if it, if it, if it did go to a lawsuit, they would say, well, state code says this, you guys are out of compliance. We would, we would lose that, and they would get to do that, do that anyway, so. I don't, I don't know if there's anyone from the state that goes around and says, are you guys in compliance or not? Uh, the, again, this, the League of Cities and Towns often sends out things that says, these are all the changes that were made to your, to your code. Go, you know, act accordingly, go, go get them, go get them fixed. I don't, I don't, we're, we're just trying to be in compliance, we're not, I don't, I don't know what. There's no group pushing these things or anything, we just, we just notice we're out of compliance and, uh,
No, I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, and if, if someone, so, so, well, I can, with, with, uh, with, uh, Mountainville, uh, we were having discussions with them, you know, they said, what's this process for the exceptions? We said, these are the process for the exceptions, and then we said, this is also a conditional use, uh, in our, in our, so you'd have to go through the conditional use process as well. Uh, in looking over what the state code says, it actually says permitted use. So, that's, I mean, that's common, that we find things that, oh, state codes is this, we've gotta, we've gotta make that change. With this one specifically, I don't, I, there are, um, I don't know if there's any, so, different, different areas have different setback requirements as far as the, that need to be met with those. In a, in a business commercial, I think it's eighteen feet, uh, uh, from, from, you know, on a, on a corner lot like this. City council in that case does have accept, uh, the ability to grant exceptions, as we saw, uh, again, before my time, but Alpine Fitness came in and said, we asked for an exception on their, their side yard setback there. At the time, the city council granted that, uh, those are, those are built in with that. Again, we're just trying to, trying to better define, uh, what a front yard is with this. I don't know if we have examples of, of in a, in a busy commercial area versus not. Right now, and I'll, I, I mean, this is a city lot, so it doesn't, we couldn't, no one's gonna do anything with it anyway, but, if this, if someone were to build on this lot, you'd have to have a thirty foot setback, thirty foot setback, uh, here, um, that, that abuts those. Yeah, yeah. So, it wouldn't, unless they tore this down and came in and said, we wanna, we wanna build a new, a new house here. Again, thirty foot here, thirty foot here, depending on the orientation of the house. If they, if they did angle it, and again, this is just a, we're making things up at this point. If they did angle it, uh, what this would hopefully do is say, this is your, this makes the most sense, depending on the orientation of the house, and they could angle it and say, here's our front door versus here's our side door. To where it actually, you know, this is a side yard, this is a rear yard type, to where it would be very similar to, to what this is, uh, there. As of right now, someone could come in and say, uh, I'm gonna put my house here, and I'm gonna have my side, you know, my front door is gonna be facing this way. So, this is my side yard, I can have twelve here, I can have thirty here, and thirty here, they could do it to where they're facing how they are now, and have different setbacks there. This is just meant to give us, if someone did come in and say, I'm just trying to get more of a rear yard or side yard here, we could say, well, this is the standards that you'd have to meet in order to, to do that, so it's more of a natural fit instead of a, that's clearly the front yard, but you're trying to say it's a side yard, that's all we're trying to. This came about because we as staff looked at the last, last example we had and said, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but our code didn't give us any language that says we could, we could go back and say, no, this is clearly your side yard versus front yard.
Yeah, and in, in addition to that, Ryan, you know, you've done a fantastic job since you've been here, looking at our code and ordinances and trying to clean it up. And say, oh, this is repeated, this is not clear, and, and, you know, that's part of your job, you know? Or at least part of the mandate that you're given by the Planning Commission and City Council to kind of clean that up. And then, a lot of times, you know, for the public's information, a lot of times, uh, Ryan will bring to us code, you know, that is like, okay, we need to clean this up, this has kinda been hodgepodge put together over the years. And so, they, they rewrite it, they propose it, it comes before us, we talk about it, and then we send it on to the city. So, part of your job is, has been to try to clarify and catch things like that. Not just to be writing bills like sometimes we fill, you know, up on the hill, they do.
And, and, and with that as well, like I said, there's, there's a process that we have to follow. I, I don't think we've ever gone through to where we haven't made some, this might, tonight might be the exception, but to where we say, this is what was proposed, let's make these changes, this makes sense, is this what we're trying to say here? So, there's a lot of, a lot of input that you guys give us that we get from the public, that goes into writing these to make sure they make sense. And obviously, when it goes to the city council, sometimes they're changed again, or, or different things happen that way, so. My, my thought is, if I can understand it, anybody can, so we're trying to simplify a lot of, a lot of what this is. So, it's, it's, you know, not, not a lot of gray area, so it's not, you know, it makes more sense, and we're in compliance, and it's best practices. So, it's a, it's a good process that I think, uh, was intended to go through this, so it's not, you know, it's, we get a lot of input and different changes and things that way, so.
Sure, sure. Okay. Okay, questions or discussion from the commission members? Questions to Ryan? Troy, any comments?
No. I think it takes care of a problem you guys have been having, so.
Michelle?
No, I'm, I, I know where Andrew's question comes from because I, from neighbors that are a little hypersensitive about everything that's been going on, and so Thomas did raise a question because, um, but I don't think, I think those questions have been answered and that this doesn't, um, affect around him.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Michelle, John? Suze? Okay, okay, with that, I will entertain a motion for this fourth, um, corner lot, our definition code change.
Is that too close to all?
No, it's just, it's been a long week. Okay, uh, I will make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to Alpine Development Code three point oh one, point one one zero, defining the front yard on corner lots, finding that is consistent with the general plan, city code, and city policies.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle Schirmer, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Troy, second by Troy Slade. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Ryan?
Uh, yeah, just communications wise, uh, just some things coming up. Who else, if I'm live? Uh, just some things coming up, uh, we will have, at the, well, with, with Mountainville, we, we discussed them last time. It, it's part of Jeff's motion, uh, there are some certain things they have to do in order to, to come back. They didn't, they didn't get us anything, uh, with those yet, so we'll, we'll probably have them on October seventh come back, um, with those changes. We did get our, uh, one of the things that they had to do was our Main Street Master Plan had a traffic element of it. We got that back on Friday at like five oh one, so it went out to them on Monday, um, to, to do that. So, we're reviewing that, we're meeting with the engineering firm that's doing their review of their initial traffic study. We're meeting with them tomorrow morning to go over those, and they wanted to clarify some, some things from our side, so we're, we're moving forward with them. Jason and I were able to go meet with the, uh, couple of board members, the facilities guy, there was the principal, I think everyone, everyone at the school came out to meet with us. Just to kinda do a tour of the building, the, or the, the area, the outside area, and, and kinda get a better idea of what, um, what their plans are and what they see going forward there. We also got a, a rezone request, uh, just, well, this, now we've got it pulled up. So, these, these parcels here are, uh, residential right now, we, we received a request to rezone those to, uh, business commercial. So, that public hearing will be, will be going out soon, and will, or the, the notices will be going out to neighbors soon. And we'll, we'll have that before you guys for a public hearing, probably on the seventh. Again, that's, that's, that, that's not something that staff is saying, we wanna rezone this, this is an applicant is coming, so that, that application will come from them, but we, we just have to have it go through the process of those.
Sorry, which two parcels?
I believe it's these two.
The ones that we did before.
And with, with, yeah. I was not on the planning commission at that point. Is there a plan, is there a plan that you know of, or just a rezone request?
Just a rezone request at this point, yeah. I've been, we're, we're working with them to say, is there anything specific, or is it just to try to continue it?
And, and I think I can anticipate what Michelle is, is gonna say is, that's, that's, you know.
So, did I just miss something, um, when there's a parking lot, is that a house now?
Which house? So, no, they're, they're, they're requesting to, they're requesting to rezone these two.
Yeah, but they're, they've done some grading.
That's already there.
Well.
That, that new parking lot, you know, the lot.
Suzanne Tyler's old house, yeah.
Yeah, but there's like, the strip, it's going to come, it's gonna bring me right to the parking lot.
Uh, not right now that I'm aware of, that there's anything going on up there. I usually drive by that area at least, at least once a day.
When you're coming and going?
But I didn't notice, well, for other reasons too, but, uh, yeah, I'll go take a look. I didn't, I didn't notice anything when I drove by, but, uh, is a, is a guy, that's not uncommon that we miss. We don't notice things when we're looking for something else, I was looking for cars in the street, so, um, we can go take a look at that, too.
And, and to kinda answer, Michelle, we can't really require, I mean, they're, they're making the petition for the rezoning change. We can't say, we're not even gonna consider this until you tell us.
So, so that's part of your review? You can, and, and whatever, whatever, I'm not telling you motions or, or anything to do on that, but is, if you wanted to, is part of your motion or example to say?
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, to say.
Exactly.
I thought that was just. Yeah, either come back or something.
Well, it's the standard operating procedure with, with this commission, because we've learned.
Yeah, and so, so the, so what they'll come back is any, and I'm, I'm not defending it or anything, but anything that's allowed and permitted or conditional, if a rezone would be eligible for that, so just take that into consideration, one way or another, if they don't, if they don't have a specific plan. Whether that be good or bad, if anything in there is, would be, would be on the table for that. So, yeah, it's certainly, certainly within that to say, uh, is, 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 again, this is not coming from the city, it's, it's coming from a, an application. If they just wanna say, we just, then that's, they can move forward their application and run the risk of, run the risk of, of whatever that might entail, so. We did get that, I have been in discussions, and again, shifting gears, this would be a separate one, with the, with the produce and folks of attempting to, to come back, uh, and rezone that. So, we're, they, they've talked to us about it, they haven't submitted anything formally yet since they, that initial one, uh, was, was, was tabled. But again, if they, if they were to come back, new notices would come out, and again, we, we just have to run the course on those and,
Sure, sure.
is what's submitted, so, um, those are probably coming before you. There's also a, uh, cell phone tower, or wireless, wireless communication tower, whatever they call them, uh, in that area. Right now, it's just a, a brown pole, but, I mean, what they wanna do is add antennas. Right now, it's just a, a brown pole, but, I mean, what they want to do is add antennas on it, they're not increasing height, or, or, you know, footprint on the ground, but where it's a substantial change, uh, we, they have to go through the planning commission and city council to do that, so.
Where are you talking?
Uh, it's whoever, yeah, so it's on, it's.
Top of the hill.
On Shepherd's Hill?
Yeah, there's, there's like, there's three or four of them all right there, there's kind of a bigger one, and then there's, there's one next to it, they've got the, you know the antenna pieces that come off on them, those rectangle piece? So there's one, there's one on there, uh, so this is the bigger one, there's one somewhere right here, and then I think this one's more in this area, but it's just a brown pole that goes up near.
Wants to update it, but not go higher?
Yeah, they don't want to go higher, they don't want to expand it on the ground, they just want to add, they just want to add those, you know, like those antenna pieces that come off, they just want to add those, so as staff, we said that, that's a substantial change, so it's got to go through you guys in city council in order to do that. It's, I don't remember the name of the company, but it's the company that, that owns those and operates those, that's, that's proposing that, to come forward, so, what was that?
Okay.
Yeah, Crown Castle or Crown, I keep wanting to say White Castle, but that's a, that's a burger place, so.
Burger?
So, yeah, yeah, I don't, I, yeah, yeah.
White Castle, Crown Burger, somebody must be hungry.
Susan, I need to go get a burger, yeah, that's.
He must be hungry.
That's where we're at, but, but yeah, they're the applicant, they're the applicant on that, so we will, we'll have them, uh, on the agenda too. Um, do you guys have any, anything for me that you want to go over communications wise? I was just trying to update you on, so with a, with a fifth.
And that's all on October seven?
Yeah, so bring, bring, bring your burgers that day, we might be here for a minute, but.
I, I will actually be out of town, but. I, I will be out of town, I don't know if I'll be able to join remotely, but it sounds, it sounds like a, an exciting, long evening, so.
Um, yeah, and that's, so with, there's a fifth Tu- Tuesday, this, the thirtieth is a fifth Tuesday, so, uh, they, they have two weeks to submit things to be on the agenda, um, but those are things that have just been in discussion so far, so it'll technically be, I think next Tuesday would be the fourteen days before.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we'll try to get something out to you as soon as, as soon as we, if we get anything else.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I will be here on the thirtieth, but I will not be here on the seventh, so. Okay, uh, no, any communication questions for Ryan? Okay, so our last item is we just need to approve, uh, the meeting minutes from September second, so, any corrections, additions, edits, comments on the September second meeting minutes? Scroll.
I don't know if I can.
Go ahead, Jason.
Um, page twenty-two of twenty-three, um, says Troy seconded the motion, down at the bottom, there were seven ayes and one nay, yet there's no listed nays. Twenty-two.
Which, which one was?
Page six on the, would be page six. With that too, number five, we did, we talked about this, we can't, uh, we can't have, we can't ask them not to increase head count, but that was discussed, but we would just need to take number five out, because it was, it was decided that we can't require them to not say you can't increase.
Oh, okay.
I think there are zero nays, nobody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number five, yeah. If you remember, Greg wanted to add that in there, but it was decided that we couldn't, that, that falls outside of.
I, I remember the motion discussions went on and on and on for several minutes, Jeff, would you consider adding this, would you consider adding this, so, okay, so, so there, I, I, I thought it was unanimous, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, okay, so, correct for Marla, uh, if you can remove, how, how do we do that? When we're, we can just remove number five?
Yeah, that would just be part of your motion, that, you know.
Oh, okay.
Motion to, whatever, say what you want, motion to approve with the following changes removed.
Okay, okay.
Line twenty-four and.
But where it's, where it is changing a motion that passed, I guess, I mean, interesting, I, I don't think, I don't think we've ever, we've never done that before.
Right, the notes, the notes are just incorrect, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So what happens?
I mean.
Uh, okay.
Once you guys clarify them, the changes.
Okay, okay. Okay, 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 thanks, Marla. Okay, 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 cool. Okay, thanks, Marla.
Can I have one more change?
Yeah, John?
On item four, communications, uh, we didn't capture the, the answer to that complaint. It, it was, Jason explained that was pre-work for the overlay pavement project, and I've heard a report that they did a marvelous job in front of my house. All bumps are smooth.
Oh, my God.
So, I don't want to be on record, so. They did a lousy job, and they didn't dampen the pavement, and not just pre-work and ready to do.
It was a little abrupt, it was, yeah, I read that. Well, on these meeting minutes, they'll say it was fantastic, and.
Just, just strike it.
Heck, no.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's true, you did say it.
Well, just add to it, that Jason explained that that was part of the pre-work, and it will be taken care of.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's fine, okay. So, a- any other changes? If not, then I'm going to ask John to make a motion.
Because you added the third one, we can't remember it.
I, um, moved to approve the minutes as corrected, um, for planning commission meeting September second.
And what are the corrections?
With, with the changes, yeah, I think you have to spell out the changes. There's three.
Delete, um, line twenty-four on page six, um, modify line twenty-five on page six, that there were, there was not one nay, we only have seven members, so.
Correct. Him.
Just delete the one nay, and on line thirty-eight, add the Jason. John, uh, explained that, that was pre-work involved in the pavement overlay, and it will be corrected.
Okay, you have a motion by John, do I have a second?
I will, I'll go ahead.
Okay, Troy Slade, second it. Any, any comments, questions, additions? Okay, if not, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous, okay? Uh, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Sue's Wittenberg asks, do we have a second? Okay, okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Michelle Schirmer, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The opposed? Motion passes, meeting's adjourned, thank you.